Good evening, and we are having the meeting at the Fall River Planning Board and it's Monday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty, it's five thirty P M. And pursuant to the open meet law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unforeseen, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. And we will have a roll call. Mario Luciola.
Yeah.
Good. Elizabeth Andrade. Present. Donna Ferrera.
Yeah.
Gloria Pacico hasn't quite made it in yet.
I'm here.
Oh, yeah.
I'm here, I just don't have video capability, it's an old computer. Present.
Hi Gloria. And I'm Cynthia Savigny. We also have William Kenny, who is the city planner, Patty Alguia, who is the recording clerk, and from Fall River Government TV, we have Alex Mello. All set? Anything else? Ready to begin the agenda items, we have a lot of people. Uh, Bill. Uh, I, item number one is.
One.
What?
It's zero, one.
Zero, one. Form C, definitive subdivision, file number twenty dash two eleven. The location Highland Farms Two, Highland Avenue, Hayfield Lane, and Courtney Street. Assess this map, U four lot one and U. Lot one. Uh, this has been tabled from the November ninth, twenty twenty meeting at the request of SciTech on behalf of the owner applicant with Saint Vincent Services Incorporated, for a proposed thirty-eight single-family house lot subdivision, with a minimum of twenty thousand square foot of area and ten and one hundred feet of street footage per lot, with requested waivers for the proposed roadway systems in the S District Plan entitled definitive subdivision plan of land. Highland Farm Two, map for lot one, U five lot one, Hayfield Lane and Courtney Street dated three seven twenty twenty. And Bill, where would we like to go from here?
Okay, Madam Chairperson, let me just say that the other three items that are related to this and which were also tabled along with it are zero two, zero three, and zero four. Zero two was review of the October twenty-one, twenty twenty legal opinion from our corporation counsel Alan Rumsey regarding status of Courtney Street. Zero three was review of a legal opinion by him regarding the date on which the subdivision control law was approved or adopted in Fall River. And number four was to review some correspondence from Kenneth Steen regarding the public or private status of Courtney Street. And that's really the focus of what we believe you should act on tonight. The development of this proposal for Highland Farms Two involves both a, an original submission for a Form C definitive subdivision plan approval, and in addition, a request to approve some Form A subdivision lots along Courtney Street. The original proposal for the Courtney Street lots ran into the question as to the status of Courtney Street. As you know, we can't approve a Form A subdivision lot unless it's determined that the way on which it's located is a public way. The course of the next several months involved some legal decisions, legal opinions, I should say, and some discussion and some gathering together of some factual information that would bear on that issue as to the status. In particular, you've seen Attorney Rumsey's legal opinion, which walks through a number of different ways that you could arrive at that determination, and really brings it down to the definitive factual issue, which is whether or not Courtney Street existed on the ground at a certain point in time prior to the adoption of the subdivision control law in Fall River, which was nineteen fifty-four, as I recall. The proponents, and I believe Attorney Frank will address this, is going to, maybe Mr. Steen as well, who's online, is going to present to the board the evidence that they believe establishes that Courtney Street existed on the ground at the appropriate time, so that we could make a determination from that finding that Courtney Street is a public way. And if that's the determination of the board, then, as you'll see later on in the agenda, the request for approval of some Form A lots on Courtney Street would follow. So, having said that, I think it would be appropriate to turn this over to whichever of the proponents wants to submit some evidence for us to consider, for the board to consider, as to the existence of Courtney Street and when it existed on the ground.
I'll go forward, Mr. Kenny.
Is that Mr. Frank?
It is. It is.
It is, okay.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, for the record. My name is Arthur Frank. I'm a lawyer with address of two oh nine Bedford Street, Fall River, Massachusetts, and I represent two developers that have an agreement with Saint Vincent's Home to purchase their land, that being Pro Pacific Homes and Steen Realty and Development Corp. I previously submitted to Mr. Kenny last week some suggested findings and rulings to assist you in your deliberation tonight as to whether this plan is worthy of an A and R endorsement. I believe they've been submitted to you, and if you want to follow along on those suggested findings, I think it'll be, it'll make a clearer path to your findings. My research indicates that Courtney Street is an improved, non-accepted way, approximately forty feet in width with a traveled way of twenty-two feet running east from Highland Avenue. It contains utilities, and it serves as an ingress and egress for an apartment complex and single-family homes in the area. It first appears on a recorded plan dated April of nineteen oh six, entitled Map of the Highlands. Now, if you look at that map, there's not a lot of engineering detail with the exception of the lots being set out and numbered, and the, and their square footage is listed, but not a whole lot is told to us about the streets. But if you go to the very next plan, the nineteen oh seven plan, which was entitled Plan of Land of Davis and Ellsbury, all of a sudden, there's a lot more engineering on that plan. For instance, the plan shows us stone bounds for roadway intersections at Arbor Street and Courtney Street, and it also shows us stone bounds for Highland Avenue and Courtney Street. Now, if you know anything about engineering practice, the reason you set bounds for corners is to show the location of the road. And in this instance, it's our feeling that if Courtney Street had not been laid out to some degree, maybe as a dirt road or a dirt whatever, they couldn't have put those bounds in the, in the road, in the southerly side of Courtney Street. They also locate various stone walls, a cemetery, and a stone wall that runs down the center of Courtney Street. And I suggest to you that in order for the surveyors to depict all of these stone walls, they had to be in sight vision. They had to be able to see these things, that they weren't, they weren't stone walls and bounds being laid in a forest. This indicates to, to me, that they located these things on the ground, and that Courtney Street was on the ground. And I think the, 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 one of the telling things is the cemetery. How do you get to a cemetery in nineteen oh seven where caskets are brought in by horse-drawn wagons, if not down a road? They can't come, they couldn't go through, through, through the forest to deliver the, the caskets. It's logical to conclude that Courtney Street was on the ground, and that the surveyor, Woolston Home in Buffington, who, who laid out quite a few areas of Fall River in their day, were able to depict the walls, they were able to put bounds in Courtney Street in the southerly side, and they were able to show you where the cemetery stone walls were. The next plan that we refer to is one that, while it was drawn up in nineteen eighty-five, it shows the land along the northerly side of Courtney Street, that being Saint Vincent's Home, the land of, of Rennie Tremblay, but most importantly, the land of Jose Noverka. And what's important about the Noverka piece is that, and it's, it's hard to see on, 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 on the drawing for Royal Crest Estates, but Courtney Street extended in some type of route of entry path along the front of Mr. Noverka's farm. He had been there since at least nineteen thirty-seven, and possibly earlier. And when Mr. Steen was developing houses in that area in twenty sixteen, he was doing some, some cutting and clearing, and he found, he found the actual road path for Noverka to use. Thus, that Noverka was using Courtney Street to get his, his, his produce out of the farm, because that's the, that was the only way in and the only way out. So, in nineteen thirty-seven, he's using Courtney Street as a, as a means of ingress and egress. And at this point, if, if Mr. Steen wants to elaborate on what he found in twenty sixteen, perhaps he can further enlighten the board as to when the, the pictures that were taken and, and to the fact that he walked this roadway.
Certainly, Arthur, thank you very much. Ken Steen, Steen Realty and Development Corporation offices in Dartmouth, Massachusetts. As Arthur alluded to, in twenty fifteen, we had a subdivision approved by the city, by the planning board, entitled Highland Woods. Highland Woods was approved at the time with its main access point being Courtney Street. So, what you see in that picture is our initial clearing of Courtney Street, which was again back in twenty fifteen, and we went through some of the old pictures that we had when this, this issue came up, and we reviewed Alan Rumsey's legal opinion, the one that Bill Kenny referred to just a few minutes ago, and, and trying to find some evidence, and, and when I was out there on the ground, I do remember the path, and thankfully, we had taken a bunch of pictures, including the one that we've included in the package, which, if you look at the, the green area up in the left-hand corner, and I think it's depicted with a red arrow, you'll see what is the extension, or what's left of the path that led out to the Noverka farm. So, you know, that's one of our, a, a better pieces of evidence here, it's very illustrative, I think, to the point that Arthur made, that, you know, Courtney Street was in fact on the ground, at least dating back to nineteen thirty-seven in regards to the Noverka farm, and probably before that, as early as nineteen oh six, nineteen oh seven. When, when you look at the other information regarding the stone, the existence of the stone walls, the stone bounds, and certainly the cemetery, which we know dates back to that time, based on city records, actually, we know it dates back to that time, in, in addition to seeing it depicted on this nineteen oh seven plan. So, I think with that, it's certainly our opinion that we have met the criteria as laid out in the Alan Rumsey's legal opinion, and we believe as a result of all of this evidence, we're entitled, and, and hopefully the board will agree, to endorse the A and R plan that's in front of you tonight.
There, there. Chair, could I just make a, make a comment, just, just to be clear? Attorney Rumsey's opinion is not an opinion as to the status of the street, it's only an opinion that, to determine that status, the board's got to make a finding as to when it existed on the ground, correct?
Correct, yes, absolutely, yes.
And as a matter of fact, he tells you in his opinion, he, he basically gave you a roadmap, and he said, first, have them show you that Courtney was in existence prior to nineteen fifty-four, and we believe we have an abundant amount of evidence to suggest it was. And then, if the board makes that finding, we believe that it is of sufficient with suitable grades and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land, single-family houses, abudders thereon, and for the installation of municipal services to serve such land and the buildings to be erected thereon. We already know that there are utilities in Courtney Street. We know that the residents of Royal Crest use Courtney Street to access their apartments. We also know, and, and I think it was very evident at some of our site meetings, that UPS uses Courtney Street, the US Mail uses Courtney Street. All types of deliveries are made up and down Courtney Street, both to the residents of Royal Crest and to the people who now live in the single-family homes at the easterly portion of, of Royal, of, of Courtney Street. So, I think there is an abundant amount of evidence for this board to make sufficient findings of fact that, A, Courtney Street was in existence on the ground prior to nineteen fifty-four, and that it is of sufficient with suitable grades and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of this land. If anybody has any questions of me or Mr. Steen, we'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
For the chair.
Yes.
To Bill, to Bill Keating. At any time, the Court Street was a paper street?
Well, I'm sure, if you look at the nineteen oh six plan, it doesn't give us any information as to with, it doesn't tell us about any engineering information. It doesn't tell us if it's public or private, but if, if, when you go to the nineteen, to the nineteen oh seven plan, all of a sudden, the engineers are giving you a lot of information. They're giving you interior angle measurements as to where Courtney Street meets Arbor Street. They're, they're giving you information as to where these stone walls run down the center of Courtney Street. Evidently, the earlier owners of the land that's on the northerly side of Courtney Street built some stone walls, and they wanted to locate them, and lo and behold, one of them was in the center of Courtney Street. That leads me to believe that these, Courtney Street was on the ground. The engineers of nineteen oh seven were able to locate it on the ground and, and to show you where the corners of that street were, and to deliver, for engineering purposes, the interior angles of the properties that abudded Courtney Street in nineteen oh seven. And then, as we carried that further along into, into nineteen thirty-seven, you've got Mr. Noverka and his farm, and the only way he gets his vegetables or corn or whatever he's growing out to the markets is to travel down Courtney Street, because that was his access point. So, we feel that there's, there's plenty of, of information available in the public domain to indicate that Courtney Street was in fact on the ground. Was it a, was it a publicly accepted way? No, it's never been a publicly accepted way, but it's been a way that the public has used as, as access to properties on both the northerly side of Courtney Street and the southerly side of Courtney Street.
Very good explanation. Two more questions to you, Counselor Frank. Is, and history of the Court Street, was anyone in, within the city or within the state applied to have a Court Street accepted within the city of Fall River? And at the present time, who is responsible to apply? Snow to Carol Court Street, is the city or has some private sector?
Arthur, let me, let me take that, let me, if you're online, Mr. Luciola, Ken Steen, I, I can answer that second question.
Thank you, Ms. Steen, thank you.
How are you tonight? Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you.
Uh, so in terms of the maintenance, so up until about twenty fifteen, the Royal Crest Estates, the apartments were maintaining Courtney Street. If you recall, and I, I know you were on the board at the time, I know you also hear a lot of different applications, but at the, in twenty fifteen, the board approved the Highland Woods subdivision. And when it was initially approved, the main access, the only access to the subdivision was via Courtney Street. So, at that time, the board visited the issue of the adequacy of Courtney Street relative to the level of construction. We went to the fire department, they, they checked the box, the fire department was happy with, with, with the, the width and the grade of the street so as to have access to, for emergency vehicles. And also, at that time, to your point, when we got the subdivision approved, we agreed, we made an agreement with Royal Crest to share the maintenance of Courtney Street until such times as it is accepted by the city. So, if that answers your question, so right now, it's privately maintained, shared by the homeowners of Highland Woods and the owners of the apartments.
Very good explanation, thank you. In the future, in the future.
Yes.
Uh, whatever may be, whatever we decide tonight, who will be responsible for Courtney Street? Is the city will take over, or is still, you know, whether development, whatever? And also, let me, let me interpret this way, you can explain. Also, the Court Street, I really personally did not drive it through. It is visible, feasible for a commercial vehicle if for someone, a lady will walk and through with a stroller with her babies, will be wet, wet enough for, for the commercial and also safety for the parents, for the families.
Yes, it absolutely is. As a matter of fact, Mr. Kenny can attest to this. We've been working with Mr. Kenny and Mr. Furlan from the DPW to, to sort of work out some details as to what we might do to improve it. Presently, it is wide enough for all of the vehicles that you discussed, and presently, there are some sidewalks on Courtney Street. And part of the discussion that we've had with Mr. Kenny is that as part of this, and, and the Form Cs and, and everything that's going to go on up there, we're going to improve Courtney Street by rep, the main, the main points would be repaving it, we're going to add sidewalks, we're going to correct and fix the sidewalks that are there so that they are comply, ADA compliant. Those sidewalks will now lead out to the intersection of Courtney and Highland Avenue, where we're going to install some benches, and hopefully have a bus stop. In addition, we're going to add some lighting to Courtney Street. So, the answer is, is that when it's all said and done, you know, should the city and the planning board approve this plan, it's going to be, you know, completely built out. And that's, again, been planned with Mr. Kenny and, and Mr. Furlan.
Mr. Keane, you convinced me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes, John.
A couple of questions. How long did we say Courtney Street was, forty, was it forty feet? No.
It's. Go ahead, Artie, go ahead.
We've got it as forty feet in width with a traveled way of twenty-two feet. So, you, because you have some sidewalks, John.
Correct. And we're coming in, and then we're looking for, we're looking for the eight A and Rs, correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
And then off, or down the end, we're looking for that, then there's going to be an extension with a cul-de-sac, is that correct?
Correct. That would be part of the Form, Form C, John.
Correct, correct. That's, that's going to be the extension, so you're trying to get these first and then loop around and into there. How many houses are on Courtney Street now? Are there any? I saw, I see a Saint Vincent's.
As part of the Highland Woods subdivision, the very easterly end of Courtney Street, which was approved as part of the Highland Woods subdivision, I think there are about six or seven homes on the very end.
Okay, so we do have utilities running all the way through, correct?
Yes, correct.
Right, we got you, we have utilities running all the way through the, the number eight A and R, just before the extension?
There's, so, just to back up a second, so there's a, there's a water main that exists from Highland Avenue all the way through Courtney Street. We worked with DPW to loop it all together so as to connect, interconnect Highland Woods out to High Crest Road to Corbett Street. We installed lines in Corbett Street to improve all of the circulation. So, the water line is already in place, and it'll obviously be extended into the two new roads. As far as the sewer line goes, the sewer line exists all through Highland Woods, and that, that easterly end of Courtney Street. So, we will be bringing a low-pressure force main as part of the construction up Courtney Street to service the five of the A and R lots, three of them already have sewer. Five of the A and R lots will be bringing up a sewer line only, and will also be extending that sewer line into that new road as part of the Form C that you mentioned, that has the cul-de-sac.
All right, which three, which three have the, are already tied in?
Six, seven, and eight already have sewer in front of the lots.
Could you come in from the back end?
That's correct.
I'm going to run this way. Uh, what are, what are we going to use, is it going to be natural gas?
Yes, there's, there is gas up and down Courtney Street, all the way in from Highland Avenue as we speak.
Okay. Bill, as far as the, Bill Kenny, as far as the upgrades that Mr. Steen is discussing, I know we talked a lot about, you know, upgrading to be beyond, to, to the city's specifications, and, you know, you, Bill, and so on. I mean, Paul Furlan, are you, are you comfortable with the upgrades that Mr. Steen is discussing as far as, you know, I know he said park benches, widening sidewalks, and so on? Did he say park benches? I heard park benches. I get tired, I hear park bench, I know I'm going to sit down.
We, we said benches, we said we'd have some benches in a landscaped area at the intersection of Courtney and Highland Avenue in hopes of actually getting a bus stop out there as well.
Yeah, John, to answer your question, I think maybe the best way to answer that is to have Attorney Frank just briefly summarize the other document that came along with the, the information about the facts on the ground, which is a roadway agreement, which is going to be a requirement before we approve the Form C portion of this project. That roadway agreement is going to be finalized, hopefully, soon, and that will require Courtney Street to be brought up to certain standards, failing which building permits will not be issued for the Form A lots, is that correct, Arthur?
I think that's, that's exactly what we had been discussing, that the agreement states, and, and I think it's item number two, developers shall not be entitled to receive any building permits until the items set forth in paragraph one are completed. The items in paragraph one are the improvements that are shown on what we've been calling the Courtney Street Improvement Plan. And there also is a, is a, an offer by the developer that he would post adequate surety utilizing a method prescribed in the city's subdivision control regulations. So, there are, there is a list of, of improvements to be made, they're, they're depicted upon the Courtney Street Improvement Plan. Developer was not going to get his building permits until those were completed or surety was posted. That was, that, that was the, the language that we were working on in the roadway agreement. We still stand by that today, that we would, we would either have them done, or if we couldn't have them done, given that the time of year that we're going into now, we would in fact post surety until they were completed.
I, I agree with that, and John, we're going to, Paul and I are going to talk with these folks, we have to finalize that roadway agreement, we have to finalize the, what the improvements are going to be, where I think we're pretty close to agreement on what they, what they are, and we've got to look at the plan again. Some of these things have come in and been put to the side while we waited for the determination that you may make tonight. But we're going to follow up on that, and Courtney Street is going to be brought up to where it ought to be. Oh, now, what about site plan reviewers, all, all these comments? That'll be required for each and every lot. Okay, yep. All right, I think I've got, I think I've got what I need. I don't know if any of my, other, my, other members have any questions or concerns?
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, my concern, my, my question is, apparently, this land all became Saint Vincent's land, and when you submitted your Highland Farms, you know, part one plan, Courtney Street ended at the current location it's at. I went to the location, I went to the street, I'm going to say March or April, I don't remember. I'm going to say March or April. I don't remember when. And because obviously we've got a lot of input from the neighbors that this was supposed to be a cul-de-sac. So I went to the, to the street and I looked at it and it looked like a cul-de-sac, obviously. And, and so this Courtney Street had ended. And I, I'm not doubting Courtney Street existed. I guess my question is the parameters of Courtney Street, because the plan you submitted for Highland Farms section had Courtney Street ending in a, in a cul-de-sac. When I went to the location, physically, that's what I saw. So I have a hard time right now trying to tell myself that Courtney Street goes all the way through. Can one of you help me, please?
Uh, yes, uh, uh, Mr. Pacheco, uh, this is Ken Steen. I think, uh, that you, there, there might be some confusion over Courtney Street and another one of the ways that's in the Highland Farms subdivision. Arthur, I, I, I don't know if Paul's on. I think you guys would be more familiar with it, but I think what she's referring to is what's on the Highland Farm side, uh, as, as, as the way that is being extended out to Courtney Street from Highland Farms, if I'm not mistaken, but please, Arthur or Paul.
Ken, Dan Agar, I, I might be able to enlighten.
Oh, thank you, Dan. Thank you. Yes, please.
So Gloria, um, the discussions that we're having tonight with regards to Courtney Street is an entirely different situation than what you're speaking of. The road you're talking about is Hayfield Lane, which is the terminus of the cul-de-sac within Highland Farms Phase One. Courtney Street is the way that you get in off of Highland Avenue that provides access to the Royal Crest Apartments and to Mr. Steen's subdivision, which was Highland Woods. Entirely different subdivision. So we, we're not speaking of any way extending from the end of Hayfield. Um, this, this discussion now is regarding solely the A and R lots being performed or proposed along Courtney Street. And in fact, I had raised my hand initially when the meeting first started that I thought the first, uh, proper course of action would be to continue the matter with regards to the definitive subdivision so that this confusion would not take place and that we would move on to the other items that was addressing the A and R. So I, I think you're getting the way, um, in existence confused with Hayfield Lane, which is not what we're discussing right now.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew.
Anyone else?
Uh, Chair, I'd just say, uh, Mr. Agar is correct that, uh, really what we're focusing on now is the finding that these folks are asking the board to make the factual finding as to the existence of Courtney and that the other items with respect to the subdivision proposal should be continued to the next meeting where we can discuss those other items then. And a vote should be taken to do that.
A vote to table, uh, oh, one, zero, one, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
I, I think, uh, I would say at the table, any remaining matters that, uh, other than the determination, the factual determination as to the status of Courtney Street.
Got it.
Do I have a motion by anyone in the board?
Could I, uh, could I just intercept one more question, please? Um, Bill, it to you, through the chair cause Bill, this question to you, through your satisfaction. What is your recommendation tonight? Uh, I'm in question. I request this myself from my instrument for the board. What is your recommendation tonight for us to vote on?
Well, the rec, the recommendation as to what to vote on is to, I, I suppose the way to put it would be that an appropriate motion would be, uh, to adopt the proposed findings that Attorney Frank submitted, which are, just let me get him in front of me for a minute here. Arthur, correct me if I'm wrong, but the findings would be first that, that Courtney Street was in existence on the ground prior to the city's acceptance of the subdivision control law in nineteen fifty-four. And, and the second, uh, is Courtney Street has sufficient width, suitable grades and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land, which is single family houses. Uh, but thereon, the relation of municipal services to serve such land and the buildings to be erected thereon. So, uh, based on the evidence that they have submitted to you, based on their observations and their recitation to you of the facts and the plans and their photograph of, of the area, it would be reasonable to make a judgment uh, that those findings are accurate and that they should be adopted by, uh, the board. It's, it's your judgment. You've heard the facts. You're playing the role of the jury here. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
And Bill, what numbers would that be though? Would that be the two through four or is that just a specific number?
Uh, I'm sorry, Patty. What? Say again?
Would that be item zero, two through zero, four that they're going to vote on together or do they?
No, no, no. The, the only vote would be to adopt the two findings.
Which is
Which is number what?
On the A and
If you, if you look at my suggested findings, they run one, one through, one through ten.
No, I'm talking about on the agenda.
No, 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 on our agenda we're talking.
Well, it's really zero, four. We're talking about the item number zero, four, which has to do the, with the public or private status of Courtney.
Okay, thank you. Cause that's, I gotta mark what they're voting on each one. So I want to make sure I'm writing it in the right spot. Yeah.
Got it.
So right now, right now is we talk at zero, four?
Correct.
Within the purview of zero, four, yes.
Is that a, what you recommend you approve of?
Right. That, that would be an appropriate vote. It would be judgment of you folks sitting as the, the observer of the facts that have presented. It would be reasonable for you to make a judgment that, uh, those two findings are appropriate and should be adopted by the board.
Okay, I am satisfied with it. So I'll make a motion to approve the zero, four. Too many things to remember all that.
To approve the two proposed findings, right?
To find it. Yes, please. Thank you.
Uh, Mario made a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second that. Yes, I can. Uh, John, is there anything else you need to discuss?
Yeah, no, I was just going to, uh, I, I was going to make the motion as well, but Mario did it first. That's fine. I just wanted to say that looking at the, um, the findings from, uh, uh, Mr. Ramsey and, um, trying to determine whether this was before nineteen fifty-four. I think this depiction, uh, on the plan here uh, from nineteen oh seven kind of gives us, I, I agree with Attorney Frank. These stone walls kind of do give us the depiction that there was some kind of, um, a dividing of property and, and whatnot and, uh, usage there. So I would, uh, it's already been made and seconded. So I will just favor as well.
And, um, we will do a roll call vote on this. And we will start out with, um, Mario. Lucilla.
Yes.
Yes, very good. Elizabeth Andre.
Yes.
Gloria Pacheco.
Yes.
John Ferreira.
Yes.
I'm Cynthia Sivigni and I vote yes. Uh, the motion has passed.
Uh, Chair, could we also?
Right. Go ahead, Bill.
I'm, I'm sorry. I wanted also ask that you entertain a, a vote to table the other three, zero, one, zero, two, and zero, three to the January meeting.
All right.
I'll make that. I'll make that motion to table, uh, zero, one, zero, two, and zero, three to the January meeting.
Do I have a second?
A second?
Uh, we'll do another roll call of vote.
I'm, I'm sorry. You really, I don't think you really do need zero, two, and zero, three. Really, it's
No, because all they are are the findings. And we already, and they were pertaining to zero, four anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, so just item zero, one being tabled to January.
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to do a roll call vote again. We're going to start with Mario Lucilla.
Yes, yes.
Elizabeth Andre.
Yes.
Gloria Pacheco.
Yes.
John Ferreira.
Yes.
I'm Cynthia Sivigni. I vote yes. That motion has passed.
Thank you all very much.
Very good.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening. Happy holidays.
What are we going to do? Item zero, two and zero, three?
They just sort of disappear.
All they were were findings and the correspondence that pertain to them before.
You could say, uh, it's sort of tabled indefinitely, I suppose.
Right, yep.
I don't even think you'd need to vote on that, uh.
Well, unless we vote to dismiss it, right?
Well, two and zero, two and zero, three are, uh, moot at this point. They've already been discussed and incorporated into, uh, uh, your findings, really.
Right. If we didn't approve four, then we probably could have kept them because we could have discussed the findings against four, but since we approved four, there's nothing to litigate between them.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good. Attorney Frank, go home.
I am home.
Sweet to everyone over here. Good luck.
I take the word for it. It's the ham.
Go to Mario's house.
I have a few bottle in the backyard to get waiting.
Happy holidays, gentlemen.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
As we say in Italy, Merry Christmas.
Okay, Cindy.
Continuing, we have item number one. Form A, applications for adjustment of plans believed not to require approval. When A is file number twenty dash fourteen eighty-five, owner applicant, estate of James Patrick Finglis, senior, location at one fifty-six Emmett Street, assesses map, E fifteen lot twenty-four.
Hey folks, I hate to tell you, but these next six items are going to be a lot less interesting than, uh, what we just discussed. Um, A, which is filed twenty dash fourteen eighty-five, uh, the, uh, plan shows the requisite, uh, facts. It shows location on a public way of sufficient frontage. And I recommend that you vote to direct the chair to endorse this plan approval not required under the subdivision control law.
My favorite.
Oh, I know. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, we, uh, approve this Form A.
I second the motion.
Uh, Patty, do we have to do roll calls on all of these?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay. And so we'll do a roll call. Mario.
Yes.
Elizabeth Andre. Yes. Gloria Pacheco.
Yes.
Don Ferreira.
Yes.
And I'm Cynthia Sivigni. I vote yes. Okay, we have one B, file number twenty fourteen eighty-six, owner applicant, St. Vincent Services Incorporated. Location Highland Avenue and Courtney Street. Assesses map, U four lot one and U five lot one. Now.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
I have a question for Bill. This not interfere with any, it's kind of an interaction when we approve the previous.
Uh, say again?
This Courtney Street right now, the plan twenty fourteen eighty-six does not have anything to do with what we already approved.
Well, actually it has everything to do with what you just approved. Uh, as of five minutes ago, Courtney Street is deemed to be a public way. Uh, so for that reason, these Form As in this twenty dash fourteen eighty-six turn out to be located on a public way. Uh, they also have adequate frontage. And, uh, my recommendation would be that you vote to advise the, uh, chair to endorse this plan approval not required under the subdivision control law.
I make a motion to approve.
Tag it.
Twenty eighteen eighty-six.
Fourteen eighty-six.
Fourteen eighty-six, correct. The light is not giving me.
All right. One more sip. You'll be there.
We're going to do a roll call. Mario.
Yes.
Actually, I have a question. I have a question. Sorry. Attorney Bill Kenny, where does Hayfield's Lane fall on this map? Do you happen to know?
Oh, let me see. I don't know if I have that map. Hold on one second. I got it here somewhere.
Hayfield is all the way at the top. If, if you're looking at the map we received.
Yeah.
It's all, it's all the way at the top. It's a cul-de-sac.
I see it. Thank you, John. Got it.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
All set?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, believe we were at Elizabeth Andre for the vote.
Yes.
You were. And Gloria Pacheco.
Yes.
Don Ferreira.
Yes.
Cynthia Sivigni, yes. Item number one C, file number twenty dash fourteen eighty-seven, owner applicant. List, uh, Maderis and all, and the locations, one twenty-three Copel Street and Doyle Street, assesses map, K five, lot number twenty-five.
Hey folks, normally, uh, looking at that, you might raise a question. The dimensional requirements are not met. But there was a special permit issued for this case, so that resolves that issue. Um, the, the property is on a public way. It satisfies the conditions, uh, uh, for endorsement, uh, under the subdivision control law not required. And I suggest you advise the chair to so endorse it.
Your motion to endorse it?
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. And we have a roll call. Mario Lucilla.
Yes.
Elizabeth Andre. Yes. Gloria Pacheco.
Yes.
Don Ferreira.
Yes.
Cynthia Sivigni, I vote yes. Okay, and now we have, um, one D, file number twenty fourteen eighty-eight, owner applicant, Miles and Gregory Briant. Location one eleven Oak Grove Avenue and London Street. Assesses map. L nine lot nine.
Uh, once again, this is a situation in which the dimensional requirements were not entirely met. So the applicant sought a variance, which was granted and has been recorded. Uh, the property fronts on a public way, so the standards have met and I would recommend a vote to advise the or to direct the chair to, uh, endorse the plan approval not required under the subdivision control law.
Uh, just real quick, real quick question. Is this, I, I'm familiar with the property. I, I followed it. This is where there's a building. Are they subdiv? I don't have that plan up on my computer. I had everything else. It's, is that what they're doing? Subdividing a lot from the building?
Yes, there's a, there's an office building now. Attorney Brilliant actually has his office on the part that fronts Oak Grove. And in the back is going to be separated out to be a dwelling.
Correct. Yeah. I think, matter of fact, I think he came before I was in the atrium for this.
Uh, I know he was in front of, uh, the zoning board in the atrium at some point in time, not too long.
I'm watching too many meetings. I'll make a motion that we approve it.
I second the motion.
Okay, I'm going to roll a vote. Um, Mario Lucilla.
Yes.
Elizabeth Andre. Yes. Gloria Pacheco. John Ferreira.
Yes.
And I'm Cynthia Sivigni. I vote yes. F, file number twenty fourteen ninety. Am I missing one? I am.
Yeah, we're, we're on E.
I'm on E. Yes, let's move up. File number twenty, um, fourteen eighty-nine, owner applicant, Antonio Costa, location one ninety-seven Sterling Street, assesses map, D sixteen, lots fifty and eighty-two.
Okay. Okay, folks, this appears to be a situation in which there are dwellings on, the two dwellings on one lot. They're dividing the lot up. Um, not an unusual situation in Fall River. They needed a variance to do it because the resulting dimensions don't quite work out. They got the variance. It's been recorded. Properties are on a public way. And I recommend you vote to, and direct the chair to endorse the plan approval not required under the subdivision control law.
Any question?
No. I make, I make a motion to accept.
I'll second that. Okay, and we'll do a roll call again. Mario Lucilla.
Yes.
Elizabeth Andre. Yes. Gloria Pacheco. Elizabeth Andre. Yes. Gloria Patrico.
Yes.
John Ferreira.
Yeah.
And I'm Cynthia Sevigny, I vote yes. And now we're on file number twenty dash fourteen ninety. Owner, Cotta Electrical Company Incorporated. Applicant is Robert Carrum. Location one seventy-five Bailey Street, assesses map, O twenty-two, lot eleven.
Uh, in this particular case, it appears that the property to the north, um, the, the retaining wall, uh, was partly, um, the retaining wall that benefits the parcel to the south was partly on the parcel to the north, if you can follow that. And they're just adjusting the boundary between the two parcels to correct that situation. Um, no variance or special permits required, um, since it's not gonna be a, uh, uh, a separate buildable lot, there's no issues, and I recommend endorsement, uh, by the chair, approval not required under the subdivision control law.
I make a motion that we approve file number twenty dash fourteen ninety.
Do I have a second?
I would like to make a motion, but I don't have that one.
You don't have that one? Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
John, dear, we need a second.
Second.
Second. No, no, I'm sorry, second. But I don't have that one. In my paperwork, I don't have it.
Um, I'm sure Patty can get you a copy of that.
Copy tomorrow.
Very good. Thank you, Patty. Okay, and so let's, um, have a roll call on this, and Mario Luciola.
Yes.
Yes. Elizabeth Andre. Yes. Patrico.
Yes.
John Ferreira.
Yes.
I'm Cynthia Sevigny, I vote yes. And we're already up to item number two. Now, um, have we adjusted the meeting schedule for twenty twenty-one? Patty?
Yes, they're now gonna be the second Wednesday of the month, um, starting in January, cause we can no longer have them on the second Monday of the month. Um, once coronavirus goes away and we're allowed to have normal meetings again in the meeting room, we can always go back to the second Monday of the month. But I wanted to make sure these are all booked, cause the second Wednesday was good for everybody, so I booked us for the whole year. But it can always be changed if we can go back to the normal way.
Okay, well, second Wednesday, you said was good with everyone, so uh, let's have a vote to approve the proposed twenty twenty-one meeting schedule.
I make a motion that we approve the revised meeting schedule, uh, with the new correct dates and the new correct year, by the way.
Thank you.
Patty, just, Patty, just from, uh, point of information, I, I don't have the Wednesday. I just got the the other one today was the, uh, still meeting, the eleven, I'm assuming this is the month.
No.
I didn't mean it scheduled for two thousand and twenty-one. I don't have the new one, so just send them in to me.
That's fine. I must have gotten another email that you didn't see because it got sent out. But I'll send it again tomorrow.
That's Terry's fault.
Poor Terry.
And Patty, I'd like a copy of that as well. So we're approving the schedule for the second Wednesday of the month for the planning board meetings for twenty twenty-one. And we've had a, a vote, we're gonna do a roll call. Mario Luciola.
Yes.
Elizabeth Andre.
Yes.
Gloria Patrico.
Yes.
John Ferreira.
Yes.
I'm Cynthia Sevigny, I vote yes. Okay, and now item number three, we have approval of minutes of the November ninth, twenty twenty meeting. Uh, do we have any discussion on the minutes of these?
No.
No? Okay, then we vote to approve?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
To approve.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Tag it.
Okay, once again, Mario Luciola.
Yes.
Yes, Elizabeth Andre. Yes. Gloria Patrico.
He could stand, said not come to that meeting.
Excuse me, that's right. You were absent, excuse me, on that. Uh, so will abstain. And John Ferreira.
Yes.
Cynthia Sevigny, and I vote yes. No public input that I'm aware of. And so vote to.
I just have a quick question.
Yes.
Now, we, we said we're gonna move it to the second, no, we're going to the Wednesday now, correct? Not the Monday?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, I didn't get that schedule either. I've got, I've still got the old one. I just checked all my emails.
All right, I'll send it out tomorrow. I don't know.
There goes last year's.
Before we journey with through chair, I just wanna say to all of us, and we are family, stay healthy. As we say in Italy, buonanotte, that mean Merry Christmas. And are we, wanna see before New Year? No, we don't.
This is it.
This is it.
Yes.
Uh, and, uh, I wanna give a vote of confidence for Chair Cindy and Bill. Which both of you.
And Patty, too. I second that.
Patty was, well, absolutely.
Through, through Patty, Patty, we, I order Santa to bring a, a huge gift.
Oh, thank you.
Patty, without Patty, we don't exist.
I, I've been, I've been, you know, I'm the oldest of all of you, because God willing, April, I'll be eighty-four.
You guys blessed you.
Just a kid, just a kid.
And I never been happy and delighted to serve on the board as we are now. Uh, Gloria, I'm speaking to you too, honey.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can see you too.
The most important thing is stay healthy.
Yes.
And God willing, by next July, I will retire. After thirty-four years working at the lottery.
So strong.
So I figure the announce of twenty twenty. So please stay healthy and Bill smile. You know, someday I'll catch up on your age too.
Cheers.
I have, I have a kissed wine on a porch, open it up, if you guys wanna swing by. Wine and plenty cognac. I wanna have my, I wanna have my date, one of my lady cognac before I hit the sack. And I mean, this is silly, you know, I mean.
We found out the secret to delivering the eighty-six.
That. Love you all. Thank God.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Hold on, we gotta wait for you on the meeting.
Oh, motion to adjourn, somebody's got a motion.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Thank you, and God bless. Bill, one thing I'm asking. I hope you don't think I'm paying it, but sometime I need information that I don't have, forever.
No problem.
He's right there. And you too, Patty, love ya.
Love you too.
Do another roll call.
I'll second.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mario, say yes.
I'm sorry?
Just say yes.
On adjournment, we're, we're adjourning. Yes.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Just say yes.
Can I say yes?
Yeah.
Just say yes.
And Emily, we stay. See?
There you go.
Yes. Thank you so much, thank you. And finally, my computer worked.
Yes, Elizabeth Andre said yes.
Yes. Yes. John Ferreira. Yes.
Yes.
Gloria.
Yes.
Said yes. Cynthia Sevigny said yes. Uh, everyone stay safe. We'll see you.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas to all.